Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council's study session for this week. Councilmember Wilkerson is going to be a little bit late in joining us. And oh, here she is. Not trusting my eyes. But I'm hearing that we're not going to have Councilmember Stratton with us. But we have two agenda items. The first is going to be about water, and then we're going to hear about continuity of operations planning, also known as COOP. But let's start with the Water Resource Collaboration Group preliminary recommendations. And Council staff member Cara Odegaard is going to lead us in that presentation.
Great. Thank you, Council President. And I have with me to help with the presentation today Jacoby Byrd, who is also a member of the Water Resource Collaboration Group. And I just wanted to start by reminding everyone who's watching today that the Water Resource Collaboration Group has been meeting now for about six months. And we were, this technical advisory group was convened after council adopted the 2020 master, Water Conservation Master Plan. That was developed by the Water Department and Kristin Zimmer, who has led that project. She's here today to answer questions if need be. And we've been working on putting together these preliminary recommendations, which were in the agenda packet. So today, we're going to be very quick to go through at a high level and to ask for questions at the end. But for a more detailed look at these recommendations, I would please ask you to take a look at the document that went out with it. So just to remind us, you know, why are we looking at water conservation? And what are some of the benefits for the city? And these are the three primary benefits that we're really looking at. If we can eliminate some of the pumping and the energy that we use to pump water to, throughout the city, then the city will save money in energy costs, but also in future infrastructure. So we know that the city wants to continue to grow and meet the needs of our citizens and our businesses, that growth without incurring additional costs will mean that we need to conserve water. And then, of course, protecting the river and habitats that that provides and the recreation that so many of us here in Spokane hold dear. I wanted to just start today by showing you this graph and to let you know where Spokane fits in terms of water consumption compared to the rest of the country. This is data that was compiled from the U.S. Geological Survey. And the numbers at the bottom of the chart indicate a per capita per day water use. And Spokane County is right here at this orange line. We're using 235 gallons per day in Spokane County per person. And in the city limits, we're using just slightly less, at 202 gallons per day per person. That puts us in the 98th percentile of water use nationwide, meaning 98% of the country uses less water than we do here in Spokane. So just wanted to put that in perspective and start a thought today, and I'm going to turn it over to Jacoby and ask him to give us a little overview of the feedback that we've done so far.
Thanks, Cara, and hello, everybody. Like Cara said, I'm just going to take a couple of minutes here to highlight some of the public engagement efforts that our WRCG team has engaged in so far, and some of the data points from that effort that stick out. Our initial public engagement has focused on a couple of things. Raising awareness about the city's current Water Conservation Master Plan, for one. Doing some education to the public about our current water use trends, specifically that 98th percentile number that Cara had mentioned, and our peak use of water in the summer. And then soliciting feedback on some general potential water use interventions, and really hearing from the community about how they perceive water use and how they're willing to potentially change some of their habits going forward. So this began with our community water survey. We launched the survey mid-January with the goal of better understanding Spokane residents' current water use habits, and if and why they might be willing to do something different to conserve water or use water in a different way. And we had 529 responses to the survey, which just ended yesterday. So Cara and I will follow up with you all with more detailed results on that in the next couple of weeks. But I highlighted one of the questions here on this slide. Next slide, please, Cara. The WRCG also hosted three community water workshop events, one for each council district. Thirty-nine citizens attended these workshops. Shout out to Shay and Laura for helping facilitate some of these. They did an excellent job. They were, the workshops were a great opportunity for community education and feedback on those potential interventions, some of which Cara will get to. And they were hosted via Zoom, of course, and began with an introduction to who the WRCG is, why we were tasked with doing some of this update work. And then I transitioned into a brief presentation on the connection between the river and the aquifer, and highlighted some data about Spokane's current water use. And then some of the resources, programs, and rebates that are currently offered by the city's Water Department. And then we ended with some breakout sessions to have smaller group discussions that were facilitated by council staff and WRCG members. And overall, I think, I think these were a really great success, highlighted the need definitely for continued and community-wide education around the concept of why conserve in the first place. That was a big, that was a big learning curve for a lot of people. But when, in the workshops, a lot of people were really, really responsive to the data that showed how our water use stacks up to other cities and counties across the country. That 98th percentile number is pretty shocking. And we learned that a lot of people would like more frequent and direct communication from the city about, you know, exactly how and why they should conserve water. Next slide, please, Cara. Cara and I also presented to park board on the WRCG's goals and strategies for updating the plan, and will continue to inform them about our process and ask for feedback as we move along the council adoption timeline. Cara and I presented to the Community Assembly on the WRCG's goals and strategies at its March meeting. And members of the WRCG met virtually with Tamara Lawless. She's the Water Conservation Manager for the City of Flagstaff to discuss effective methods for long-term municipal water conservation with her. Flagstaff and Spokane actually share a lot of climate and water characteristics, so it's a, it's a great comparison. And while Spokane residents use 202 gallons per person per day, Flagstaff residents only use around 84 gallons per person per day. So, and that, that use of 84 gallons per person per day at Flagstaff is representative of a 50% reduction from their water use in the 1980s. That's a big, a big accomplishment on their end. So lots to learn from them. My big takeaways from that discussion were that Flagstaff has a really, has this baseline mandatory every other day watering requirement. They started out with a voluntary every other day watering requirement, but found that citizens really found it too jarring or confusing when they were told during a drought that all of a sudden it was a mandatory requirement. So that was a big takeaway for me. And that's kind of the rundown of our engagement so far. And Cara is going to take over again to talk about some of our preliminary recommendations that were informed by this outreach.
Great. Thank you, Jacoby. So city council had asked the Water Resource Collaboration Group to do some research and understand, you know, the way we use our water here and provide some feedback on what our conservation targets might look like. As you recall, last year, when council adopted the current plan, the current plan had outlined at the existing target, a 95% reduction in the baseline water, in the baseline water use. So as you can see in this chart, I thought it was helpful to put what a 5% reduction might look like in terms of per capita gallon daily use. It keeps us still in that 98th percentile ranking, but we're starting to chip away at that. The Water Resource Collaboration Group thinks that a 25% reduction target is both ambitious and achievable. And so what that would look like for us in terms of gallons per day is 176, still rather high, but I think we need to start somewhere. And the, the analysis that came to this conclusion looked at pumping data for the city, and there's a lot of underlying data that we can provide council if that's something that you're interested in. So the city of Spokane already has a pretty awesome water conservation program. Everything in the plan, all the components of a good water conservation plan are already listed in the plan. Currently, the budget and staffing levels that are exist in water conservation, in our water conservation department, really are set to achieve that 5% reduction target. Some of the additional incentives that we thought could be helpful are adding leak detection devices. Currently, they're not on the incentive list. However, I will state that the Water Department has been talking with Flume, which is one of the leading providers of individual leak detection, and there's a program that the city is already looking at. So we would just encourage, we heard last week from the Water Department, we just would encourage that partnership going forward. And obviously, the Spokane State Program has been very successful, and we were excited to learn that the Water Department is going to continue expanding that moving forward. The current water conservation plan has a focus on the top water users and helping those folks really identify where their water waste is coming from. The Water Resource Collaboration Group feels like the city could provide some additional onsite technical assistance that would, again, target those top water users, but provide onsite assistance in water efficiency, whether that's inside the home or in their landscaping. And we also think that this program should be extended to the commercial sector and would require expertise in, or commercial water resource management. And one of the things that we've heard over the last 12 months is that some folks can't afford to fix plumbing in their home. So additional research and attention to low-income programs would be helpful. We also, as Jacoby mentioned, heard a lot about education and outreach. And though the messaging is great, it's just not making it to all of our residents. So many of the folks who participated in our workshops received their invoice from the city electronically, and they thought that the city could be doing a better job with messaging on their bills. And the messaging might include things like water use comparison, how Spokane, how their water use or that individual home's water use compares to their neighbors, how it compares to the country, et cetera, whatever data we can give them, because they felt like that was a useful motivator to want to conserve more. And then there's an opportunity to provide solutions right on those bills. So in conversations with folks at the city, I hear that the city is looking at updating their e-bill, or their billing system, and so hopefully, these new systems will have somebody's additional ability to reach out to the customers. So the biggest, one of the big things that we identified in our research and in looking at how do we accomplish that move from a 5% to a 25% reduction in water use, and really, we thought that it would require an increase in staffing. I think Jacoby mentioned that Flagstaff, when we met with them, they have about a third of the Spokane population, but they employ five to six full-time employees in water conservation. Currently, in Spokane, we have two full-time employees. And so we really think having the additional technicians onsite to help with those onsite visits and a full-time education and outreach specialist would really help the city with the messaging and accomplishing those goals. Here are a few policy updates. There are more details in the document I sent out in the agenda, but as Jacoby mentioned, and one thing that we heard from the Water Department last week was that you're exploring the idea of every other day watering. The Water Resource Conservation Group really supports going to that as a baseline requirement rather than to use only in a case of emergency. There have been plenty of reports out there that show voluntary measures don't work very well, and they cause a lot of confusion when we, when we actually go into drought. And then these other items here, too, daytime water prohibition, landscape and irrigation standards for new construction. And then this last one was a debate amongst our, our group because we weren't sure if there was any precedent or willingness to require top users to participate in water conservation programs, but that's just something that we thought should be on the table. That's all that we have today for our presentation, but we'd really love to take a minute to offer a conversation with council members to see if there are any questions, any thoughts on what we might have missed.
I see Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart.
Sorry, Brian.
No, I couldn't see him, so, great.
Yeah. A couple of questions. Cara, that, that initial stat that you showed about use per person, or per household, maybe it was, is that water use or water consumption that that's based on?
It's based off of water use, the water that comes into the home, or that's water that you're buying from the municipality. So...
Well, so is it water use, meaning it includes the water that goes back into the system, or is it water consumption, meaning it's water that does not return to the system?
It's both. It's what comes in through your water main, to your home or business, through the city's water system.
Well, I guess what I'm asking...
So if you're digging it on your lawn, or your outdoor irrigation, it includes that, and it also includes...
Okay. So it's water use. Well, my, so my, my curiosity is where we rank as a percentage of water consumption based on actual water availability, and where that competes with other communities around the country. So we, you know, obviously with our aquifer, we have a lot of the water availability, and I'm just kind of curious what our percentages of water consumption relative to that availability is, because I think that's probably more relevant than just use compared to other communities.
Well, we can definitely look into that, Councilmember Cathcart. I do think that this is part of the problem, that we've been under the impression that we have unlimited water supply, and with a changing climate and our growing communities, that is no longer really the case. And we know now very clearly from the data that when we pump water out of the aquifer, especially during the low-flow months of the summer, when we're using irrigation to water our lawn, we are actually taking water that would normally be returned to the river. And so it's impacting our river ecosystems, our ability to recreate. And in some cases, with, with the water tower up on the cell phone, with that debate, you know, we, as we grow, we have requirements from the state to be able to have a certain amount of water for fire suppression. So we do think that the paradigm needs to change, the conversation.
Yeah. And, and I agree, and that's why I want to see that measurement of water consumption, because that, I think, accounts for everything that you're talking about, rather than water use, which is a little bit different, because that's water that's, that is going back into the system as well. And then the last thing I'll just add, I, I think the best way to get people to reduce water use is to gamify and provide incentives. And I don't think mandates and restrictions, and I don't know how you would enforce no daytime use. Would you send code enforcement out and look for sprinklers that are active and give people fines? I just, you know, I just think there's a point where it's not necessarily so practical, and it would make a lot more sense to provide people an incentive, hey, you reduce by a percentage of, based on last year's bill, you get X dollars off your bill this year. And, and maybe even gamify, allow neighborhoods to compare with neighborhoods, or homes with homes and see how they're doing. And I, I just think that there is an opportunity to do it in a way that people are excited to actually participate.
Sure. Thank you.
And I'm just, take the prerogative, and then I'll call Councilmember Canir. One of the, the key things to making this work and achieving that, Councilmember, is getting real-time water meters going that are, so that we know exactly. And then we can actually figure out the actual cost to provide water to each location, especially at different times of day and things like that, and charge people accordingly, and then, again, give people incentives if they water overnight and things like that. So, but we've got to install those individual meters, which there is a plan to do, it's just going to take a while, and I'm hoping we can accelerate it. But, Councilmember Canir.
Thanks. I, I want to dispel the myth, first of all, that we have an unlimited supply of water. It would just take a couple of drought years, and we would be really in a bad way. I lived through the California drought where we put buckets in our showers so that we could water potted plants or reuse that water. I don't want to do that again. And I think incentives are the way to go. We did that with our urban forestry update, provided incentives for people to not only plant trees, to maintain trees, and increase the urban canopy. I do think that's the way to go. But I also think we need to correct the misconception that water is cheap and plentiful, because it is cheap, it's probably too cheap, but it's not plentiful. We need to correct that. And I think this group has done a great job in outreach. I wouldn't discontinue that. I would keep that going, because I think that's the only way we're going to get people on board, especially new people coming into the area thinking, great, you know, trillions of gallons in the aquifer, well, not so much. And when we think of our river, and Cara, you mentioned our, our ecosystem, and most people just shrug their shoulders, I don't care about that, but they do care about economics. And the recreation piece is huge for the river, but also what kind of economic impact it has for our downtown. And we can't discount that as well. So I'd push the economics a little bit more, especially to some groups, because they're not going to respond if you tell them it's good for the environment. Thanks, and you guys do a great job.
Councilmember Canir, I just wanted to respond to that a little bit in saying that it is tough to message economics when the water rate structure doesn't allow you to actually, doesn't incentivize you to, to conserve. So a big part of our messaging strategy that I think is effective and should probably continue is talking about water waste, because we use a lot of water that is unnecessary and might take a long time to get back into our ecosystem, into our aquifer. So when we're talking about using three times more water than you need to on your landscape during the summer, I think that's effective to get people to think, nobody likes to waste, whether it's money or anything. So I think it's a, it's a smart strategy going forward. Sorry, I'm hearing an echo.
Councilmember Mum.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, great presentation, really good information. And I, I really want to encourage us to use proven policies. I don't want us to guess and come up with stra, I'd let, I mean, everybody has a water system in the country. Let's see what's working. We're not the first people looking at this. Let's find out what works. So when you're saying voluntary doesn't work, well, then let's, let's go to something that is working and does work. Secondarily, I really would like to take your recommendation and work with the budget planners for the 2022 budget to talk to the administration about adding staff and what that would look like. Maybe we phase it in. But what a great return on investment for our community. We already know they struggle to pay for their utility bills. We can see that during the pandemic. If we can show them how they can save money every month by being more careful with how they water or how they use water, what a great way for us to make it cheaper for people to pay a lower utility bill. So I think that investment with staff would be a very good return on investment for our community.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I also will be interested as we keep track of how our new water rates will affect our community around some water use and see how that continues to play into the solution.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, we made some progress on that this year, but I still, based on my understanding, the people in the lower-income neighborhoods pay more than it costs to ship them water, and the people in the higher-income neighborhoods up on the hills pay less than it costs. And so we still need to continue to gradually actually have people pay for the actual cost, and not just the cost for today pumping it, but what the cost is for the new water tanks that we're going to have to do for that. So I hope we keep doing that. And then I just had one little analogy for Jacoby's water waste. I also lived in the San Francisco Bay Area at the same time, Councilmember Canir, during very bad water droughts. And, you know, back in those days, when we brushed our teeth, we just left the water running in the sink while we brushed our teeth. For some reason, it was just a cultural norm, it did not make our teeth any cleaner to let the water just run. And so, you know, now we turn it off, and if I ever see a faucet running in my house, I immediately pounce on it, because I can't help it. But the same is true for landscape watering. What the science is so far is that most people way overwater their lawn. So you're not getting a greener lawn because of it. You're literally just putting it down the drain, just like letting the sink run while you're brushing your teeth. So we just have to continue that education thing. And I commend everyone who's already mentioned that I think in the next budget, we should invest in it, because it will save us millions of dollars down the road. And then finally, the last picture I'll paint for your mind is, it wasn't that long ago that Avista used to turn off the river channel in Riverfront Park during August, and we negotiated a change of that. But that's because we really do have a water shortage in, in August. It's pretty severe. And so anything we can do to shave that off would be helpful. Next week, we're going to hear again from the Water Resource Group on recommendations, if there is, or I shouldn't say if, but when there is the next drought that, that comes. So we'll look forward to that. But right now, love, oh, Councilmember, not Councilmember...
Sorry, Council President.
Yeah.
If I may, thank you for reminding us that we're going to bring back to you next week the drought response measures that the drought team has been looking at, but also the next steps for us are really to hear from you. So if you haven't, if you have more thoughts and feel so inclined, please email them to me, because we will... me because we will incorporate those in our final report.
Great. All right. So now I'd love to turn to emergency planning. And we have Sarah Nuss, who's coming to share some thoughts with us about some of her work. So Sarah, could you remind us of your job title again because I can't remember exactly what it is? And then tell us what we need to know today.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Nuss. I'm the Emergency Management Director, or just Emergency Manager, that's just a fancy thing you put on your resume. I am here to discuss continuity of operations planning for the city. This is just one of many projects that emergency management will undertake in the next five years or so of this planning operation. And actually, this was requested by you, Council President Beggs, even though it was on my list, that request actually had me bump it up, which is, I think, exciting for all of us. So I'm just going to jump right into it. And if we could hold questions till the end, just because I'm a fast talker and I want to be efficient with time, I can grab all of them at the end. All right, so these are the topics we're going to go over. I just wanted to outline them. We're going to talk about risk and what disaster risk looks like, what COOP is, the benefits of COOP planning, the role of government and the city, the elements of a viable COOP capability. So it's not just a plan, it's, you know, what is it exactly instead of just a piece of paper or a lot of paper. And then what is the role of elected officials? You know, I'm here talking to you, of course, I'll be talking with our cabinet and with the rest of the city as well, and actually the community at large about what this should look like. And then I'm going to give just a very brief overview of what the planning timeline looks like at this time. All right, so for risk, risk is basically the weight of a probability of an event occurring with the consequences or the impacts of something happening. So, you know, over here, what is the probability of a wildfire? We have wildfires often, that's a high probability. What are the consequences? Well, we've got wildfire pretty on lock as far as what response looks like, and we're still working on mitigation efforts. So that's how we, in emergency management and risk as a professionalism, define and be able to weight and rank different risks within our community. And then risk mitigation, which I'm going to talk about multiple times, are anything that you do to sort of lessen those impacts, right? In New Orleans, they build levees by the river so they don't flood. Here, we harden critical infrastructure buildings by fortifying them so if there's an earthquake, they aren't so quick to crumble, things like that. In disaster preparedness, I always tell people, you know, to prepare for earthquakes, you need to anchor your bookshelves and take heavy things up tall shelves and move them down because they might fall on your head or on your pets or your children. Those are mitigation, things you do to reduce the impacts because you can't always prevent things. It's more reducing the impact. All right, so what do we do in emergency management as far as mitigation? So the things we look at when it comes to those impacts are first and foremost always life, safety and health. And then in conjunction with that, we look at, you know, what are the things that could be done to the natural environment? How is our economy affected and how is our infrastructure challenged? So the way that we work on mitigating those things are we develop all kinds of plans, right? And the plan that we're talking about today is continuity of operations. And basically, I'll get into that next. Let me get ahead of myself. And as I said before, different ways of mitigating our implementing strategies to reduce the impact. This can look like insurance, this can look like flood insurance. The city has insurance for various things, so do our community members. And then, like I said, hardening of infrastructure, adding security, ballards outside, all kinds of things. All right, so how do disaster and emergency impacts affect the city? So when we develop a COOP plan, we develop this plan because during a disaster, and that could be something that we don't expect or a seasonal windstorm, it could be something that we have notice of or we don't have notice of. What can happen during those times are that our lines of direction control can be disrupted. So someone who's in a leadership position might be injured or might be out of town or might be unable to get to the city or get to work based on damage to our community. Operations will be disrupted. And on top of that, communications could be disrupted. That could be internally, the way that our staff, you know, in public works communicate with each other on radios, or that could be the way that we contact our partners like Avista or the county, things like that. In all, you know, developing a comprehensive COOP plan is mostly about the capabilities that are needed to be put into place and planned for ahead of time to be able to continue offering those, the services that we offer as a city. So I want to take a second here. You know, one of the common misconceptions about COOP planning is that it's a disaster response plan. So it's not exactly that. A disaster response plan is something that is outlined ahead of time so that our first responders in general know what they need to do to respond to those incidents to protect life, safety and our well-being. COOP planning is more like how do we continue offering the services that we consider are essential services or essential functions during a time where they are disrupted. So for government, that looks like we identify what our mission essential functions are and we outline what we need to do to make sure that those happen in a timely fashion. And I'll talk more about what that looks like down the presentation. All right, so COOP planning as a whole, it ensures that we can continue delivering those mission essential functions, which I'm going to abbreviate as MES moving forward because it's a mouthful. And how do we continue delivering our services during things that are not our normal operations? Of course, that could be something, you know, as, I don't want to say minor, but a seasonal windstorm, or it could be something as catastrophic as a large earthquake that would cripple our infrastructure. There's a scale. This is a scalable tool that we can use for any kind of emergency. So what COOP is, it's the activities that our departments and divisions need to do to make sure that their essential functions are formed. And then we put that in plan and procedure form via annexes so that folks can grab what they need at the time. And then it's not just developing this plan, it's taking the time to do testing and training and exercises, also known as TT and E later in this presentation, to make sure that we actually keep this plan relevant and test it against different threats. And that would look like tabletop exercises, functional exercises, you name it, any way to just ensure that this plan isn't just something that sits on a desk and gets dusty. And the overall goal, right, is that we fortify our organization to be more resilient because resilient communities help sustain, you know, a resilient nation realistically. All right, the benefits of COOP planning. So like I said, it's good business practice. In the private sector, COOP planning is known as business recovery planning or disaster recovery planning. A lot of time is focused around IT and information technology. But like I said before, this is for what we call all hazards emergencies. This is for anything that could be natural disasters, things that are manmade. So this could be terrorism incidents or accidental, right? People in our community don't always know where everything is, sometimes things get damaged, or something that we can't control but is sort of human error, like malfunctions in dams that would affect our waterways, IT, a virus, you know, an accidental virus, things like that. All right, so what is our role? You know, in looking, in creating this presentation, I was trying to think through the lens of, you know, our elected officials and understand what our role is here in this COOP process. So we are required to uphold the continuity of government. And what that is, is basically just us making sure we deliver our mission essential functions, which again, I know that's an umbrella term, but we identify those in the COOP planning process, every division and department and elected officials and whatnot. We work through that and we talk about it and identify them together. And part of that process is that sometimes we identify things that need to be done now. For example, perhaps we realize that one of our facilities is, you know, only one tiny ground shake away from crumbling, you know? So we think, okay, sounds like we need to put in some funding to mitigate that fortification. So it's not just developing a plan, it's talking about what we need to do. And there are some things that could come out of this process that would be risk mitigation efforts. And a continuity of government is not a plan, it's a capability, okay? And like I said before, we bear the responsibility for continuity of planning. We are directly connected to our community, we are responsible to our community, they pay our salaries, they pay my salaries, thank you to all of you watching. And they're relying on us to provide the things that we've become used to, right? Water. We had a plumber come by our house the other day and turn off the water to do a few things. And I can't tell you, I think I went to the sink three or four times to do things while I was waiting and just realized that the water was off and I just kept forgetting. We're just so used to this, so used to having water and trash services and streets that don't have anything blocking them, we're just so accustomed to that. We rely on our government officials to take care of that in times of normal operations and disasters. And we, as I mentioned before, doing this supports our county, our state and the nation to be more resilient in the face of all kinds of emergencies and disasters. All right, the objectives of COOP planning are to, like I said, and I'm going to say a million times before, the mission essential functions because that's realistically what we're all planning around here. And I said before, the goal is to reduce a lot of the life, minimize damage, ensure the succession of our leadership and those who get to make decisions, mitigate any disruptions to our operations, especially the most crucial life-saving, to protect our assets and infrastructure, to think ahead about what we can do to fortify those buildings or to make sure our network connections are set up in places that if we need to bump over to another facility because one is damaged, is that facility set up to do the IT needs we might be looking for? And then the most important part of emergency management, we're always going to say this, just staying on top of the plan, exercising it, getting people used to it. You know, as your emergency manager, it's not my goal to build something that's on a shelf, as annoying as that might be. I'll be pestering all of you to participate and making sure that those stay valid with our partners in play as well. All right, so I'm not going to go into these too deep because otherwise I'd be here for hours, but these are the most important tenants of what this COOP capability looks like. And these are the things that when I talk about the schedule, these are things we'll be working on in the planning group and the strategic group that we'll be creating. So the plans and procedures, that's just what do you do, right? What do you do when something happens? That's kind of the bulk of this process. And then the mothership is those essential functions. And we will, we rank those by hour, how timely is it to recover, right? And so, you know, usually, common practice is to use about four different categories, what needs to be done within two hours, what needs to be done within 24 hours, you know, 48, 72 plus, right? We rank things that are essential immediately, all the way down to what's acceptable within a few days. Delegations of authority. So this is really important, especially for council here and for mayor and other leadership. This is the formal delegation of the authority to do certain legal things. And this is, I put an asterisk here, so I'd remember to remind you that this is different from orders of succession and that delegations of authority are done ahead of time on paper, signed officially, and they are done for a very specific role, right? To sign a legal document, to do a disaster declaration. There's not a complete delegation of your role. That's what orders of succession is. Orders of succession is if someone in a leadership position, all the way from, you know, city council down to department director, whoever, you know, being able to have that span of control planned out so that if one person is unavailable to get to work or is injured or deceased, someone else can take on that planning. And that's important to talk about ahead of time so that we all know what our role is, right? All staff, not just directors and above. Alternate facilities, this is literally planning, if we can't use one facility, can we bump up to another? If our IT is out at one facility, not out at the other, if we had an attack on one or it's insecure or safe, it's not just being able to pick up and go there, it's knowing ahead of time that that's the facility we want to use and being able to stand it up under 12 hours. So that's a planning element that you do ahead of time. Interoperable communications, I said before, planning ahead for backups, you know, if one radio channel isn't working on our communications, do we bring in ham radio operators? You know, having those things set up ahead of time to be able to, and just identify what are our backup, what are the channels, especially, this is most really also very important for our public works field teams and our first responding agencies like FIRE and PD. Vital records, this is payroll, this is retirement, this is legal, this is, all of those things that are important to our work that sometimes are paper copies, sometimes are on a web platform. But if we can't access them somewhere else, even digitally, do we have paper copies backed up, things like that. Human capital, this is planning to train and/or educate all of our staff so that they understand their role and understand if they might need to take over for someone else who might not be available. We have a plethora of resources here in our staff and it's not fair nor is it right to try and activate them during an emergency. So this is a way to give everyone a chance to understand, okay, what is my role? What are the essential functions of my department or my division? What are the essential functions of the department next to me and how might I get leverage to help that? TT and E, I won't go into that again since I've already said it twice. But devolution reconstruction, so devolution is a very extreme situation in where a facility basically, or a workspace is so damaged that another facility is needed. So the example commonly given is if one of our police department is destroyed and police needs to continue their operations, it's not that they're doing their mission essential functions necessarily, it's that they absolutely need a complete other space to do all of their work. And so we would have a library, that's just the example given, planned to be closed to the public and used only for that purpose, if that makes sense. It's a little, it's a little like alternate facilities, but really extreme. And then reconstitution is basically us getting back to our normal operations in whatever capacity that looks like, you know, being able to offer our services to our community. All right, this is for you guys. This is, you know, what is the role of elected officials? I know, Council President, you have asked me this several times and I just wanted to take an opportunity to point out what I think, and this is open to interpretation for sure, but what I think your role could be if you wanted to support this. So obviously, learn about COOP and you're doing that, you asked me to come today and I'm really grateful for the opportunity. Participate. So assigning your staff to be a part of this process, you're effectively a department as well, so we will need to have someone or a few people ideally represented in our planning meetings and groups so that we can get that work done for your department. Prioritize the work and make it available, make some time available for your staff if they have limited bandwidth. Engage and collaborate, come to the exercises, you know, learn about this process. It's important if you are constituents, ask you about what we're doing to make sure we can deliver services. I want you to be able to answer it and not just have to reference it to me. Of course, I'm happy to do that. But, you know, you guys are public facing and have an opportunity to really expand education in this realm. And that's sort of the share part, right? Share here with the public. And then support, support anything that comes out of this. If we need to consider funding mitigation efforts, you know, take that into consideration over the next three years of our planning and budget cycles and weigh the risk. The whole point of this position and this job is to mitigate risk and protect our community. This job being my job, not yours. And then this is my estimated timeline. I didn't want to get too deep into it because I obviously can't make any promises. I am a one-person department. But essentially, what it looks like is we'll spend the next two quarters, here we are now, presenting to you, I'm presenting to Cabinet this afternoon, then I'll be gathering a steering group. That will be people who have done this before and who know just, you know, more than I do, if you will, and people who are interested as well. It's open, so if any of you watching this that work at the city are interested, please reach out. And then the planning group, that will be, you know, the staff that are represented from all of our divisions who will be working on our, on this project. We will have regular meetings through Q3, Q4 with worksheets and we'll be tackling one of those 11 elements at a time, you know, mission essential functions, orders of succession, things like that. We'll be addressing that probably in about every three-week chunks. And then we'll have a draft in a comment period and adjust things as needed and then eventually there will be a final copy. All right, so I'm going to pause here and I'm going to stop showing my screen because I can't actually see any of you. And then I'm going to open it up for questions.
Councilmember Canir.
Hey, I'm feeling chatty this morning, too much caffeine. I'm wondering if there's a way to assign probability to each one of the scenarios that would be likely, for example, earthquake or oil train derailment or hazardous spill on I-90. Can you extract information from past experiences or other municipalities, especially the earthquake piece, because we're not really, we have them, but you'd be hard pressed to even...
An example, yeah. Absolutely can. Part of this process is THIRIS, Threat Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment. So yes, we will be weighing and assigning weight to all of the threats that, all hazards threats for our region.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Sarah. That was a pretty deep dive.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So I've been here a year. I've never had a fire drill. If there was one, I wouldn't know where to go. I know I wouldn't take the elevator, I would take the stairs. But then we're, in my world, we would do the drill, we would know where to meet in case of emergencies. And I know it's been a COVID year, but as part of your job, will you help us get there also?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, that is going to be under the emergency operations plan, emergency, sorry, there's a lot of plans, emergency action plan for City Hall. That plan is complete, is waiting for one annex to be done. I'm working on it right now with the safety department. And there is a fire drill in there and I'm planning one as soon as we have staff back in the building. Thank you for asking that.
Other questions, comments? It's my...
And this won't be the end.
Yep.
I promise. This is more just me trying to give you guys, I know that was a bit of a deep dive, it really wasn't as deep as it could be, so that's something to talk about. But it's, I want you to be aware of the process, I want you to be there side by side and understand what we're doing instead of me showing up one day with a report and saying, here's what we're doing.
Yeah, what I, I mean, my understanding of your job, although somewhat sidetracked by COVID last year, is that you are going to help lead us. You're not going to write the plans for each of our departments, but you're going to perhaps give us templates and questions and kind of the advice you're giving us right now is like, all right, we need to assign a staff person who's going to be the lead to herd the cats in our department, which are even more difficult to herd than typical, I think. So I'm looking forward to maybe some of those question, as you develop them for your citywide work group, that you can bring it to us, we'll designate somebody who will be lead in our department so that we know what to do for the most part. Most of us know what to do in most situations. That's really the bar that I'm trying to, trying... That's really the bar that I'm trying to, trying to reach. So I'm really glad that you're able to turn to this. And again, I'll just say this, it's not Sarah's job to write the plans for every department. It's her job to support them in writing their own plan because it's not very effective unless it's their plan that they understand with their lenses. So anyway, super excited.
Thank you for saying that. Appreciate that.
Yeah, super excited you could come here today as one of the many departments that you will need our cooperation. We will, we will provide it. So that's good. So yeah, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda for today. We'll be back for Monday. We have a...
Oh, Council President.
Yeah, Councilmember Burke.
Hi. I had set aside some time for one of our study sessions to go over the 13 top finalists for our flag.
Uh huh.
Somehow we missed it. It was supposed to be in February. I think the last Thursday in February. We're opening up the voting in April, and I want to make sure that you all have some time to see the 13 top flags. If there's any big concerns, we want to hear them before we send it out to a vote of the people. So I didn't know if, you know, I could send it to you. Do we need a study session? Do you want to hear from the flag commission? What do you guys want as council? Because I, that was a total mishap. It was supposed to happen in February, and I just, somehow it got miscommunication between me and Hannah Lee. So totally my fault. But yeah, I just wanted to check in with you guys. What do you guys want to see? Is an email sufficient, and then we can communicate from there? Or do you want me to chair the flag commission to our next study session and go over it? Or what do you guys want?
All right. I'll, so the question on the table is, what do we need in order to allow it to go forward? Councilmember McCaffrey.
Yeah, I think a presentation would be great. Just hear a little bit more about the process, get to see the designs, and be informative for us as well as the public. So whether, I'm agnostic, study session or maybe a committee or something like that. But I do think a presentation would be really helpful.
So I'm just going to look over to my study session producer. What's next week? Is it about the same as this?
No, we're very full next week.
Okay.
We have some time in the first.
Okay. Would April 1st study session work?
Well, the voting opens in April.
Okay.
So...
All right.
Yeah.
We have a full hour and a half. So if you guys want to go long next week, we can.
Okay. What are the topics next week?
2021 construction season, drought response, shared mobility contract update, and COVID update from Sarah.
Okay. Well, we'll see. There's one item maybe that could get bumped a little bit. But we'll, I won't keep everyone under it.
Yeah, I would say taking more than just a couple minutes.
Yeah.
We can just share the screen with our voters' pamphlet and show you the flag designs and also send them to you, you know, before the meeting so that you guys can look at them there. I think Beth had something, though.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I was going to say, I can infer with Councilmember McCaffrey being on the flag commission, I think it's important that the community just hear some of the work that's been going on since last year to get us to this point. So that'd be great.
Councilmember Mum.
I'm just wondering, instead of using a study session, why don't we do it where there's more people who attend and watch? Why don't we just have it be a report, administration report at one of our council meetings, then we can get more exposure.
Yep, that sounds good.
You're brilliant. Brilliant.
So we could do that.
Well, no, I just, I think it's a great thing, and we need more exposure.
Yep. Well, let's do that next Monday night, then.
Okay, great. I'll work with Hannah Lee. Thank you so much. Sorry to stop the ending of the meeting.
No, no, thanks for bringing it up. So that's great. Okay, yeah, Pies meeting next Monday, and then the next Monday after that. It's still going to be March, but we're going to have the April Public Safety Meeting, the last Monday in March. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order today? Not seeing anything. Well, everyone have a fabulous spring day and a fabulous weekend, and we'll see you on Monday. Take care.
Go ZAGGS!